Ready to go.
I'll call to order this meeting, uh, March 7th of the East Hampton Planning Board. Is there anyone here to speak to anything that is not on the agenda? All right, moving right along to our minutes. Everyone have a chance to look at the minutes from February 7th, 2017? Anybody have any comments, corrections?
I motion to approve the minutes from February 7th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and chat, you're abstaining, all right.
Abstaining.
And then, uh, same thing, minutes from February 21st, anybody have any comments, corrections?
I motion to approve the minutes from February 21st.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing.
And abstaining chat, all right. Uh, moving along, we have a couple A and Rs, uh, Pomeroy Street, Donald and Paula Psychowski.
Um, yeah, the applicants are unable to attend tonight, so, um, pretty straightforward A and R. And there's the plan. Pomeroy Street's here and it meets the frontage requirements.
So Lot 5 and Lot 6 are one lot right now?
Uh.
This, these are, it's gonna be split into these two?
Yeah, this, it's all part of this bigger parcel, which is down here.
Oh, okay, so these are both being pulled out?
So these are being pulled out of the bigger parcel.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. They all meet the frontage.
Looks that way. Planning Department have any comments?
No.
I make a motion, we approve the A and Rs presented.
Endorse.
Endorse the A and Rs, okay, can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right. Let me start signing.
When I first moved in, he said, and that's where I live, was on Pomeroy.
So the Mylar and three copies need to be signed.
I only have a Mylar and two copies here.
And sign them all.
Sign those ones, cool.
You won't have their own copy, I guess.
Yeah, but the most uncomfortable reference I ever had was on Pomeroy.
I didn't live with one of them, though. I was adjacent to him. You know, that may come. I hope I'm alive when it does.
Yeah, 'cause I will.
You wanna know what I wanna do? I wanna travel it.
All right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, sorry.
I'll take it.
Thank you. All right, next up, 221 North Hampton Street, Autumn Properties. Someone here for that? Mr. Boyle?
Thank you.
Um, this is just for a common farm and it represents, um, the lot that we're gonna sell, including the land that was discussed in a, um, public hearings, so if there's no, uh, no need for an eas- no need for a stormwater management easement.
Okay.
Lot 1A is being separated from, just, and Lot 1 will remain. So this is Route 10. They had, originally they were gonna, this is, this was where their property line was gonna be.
Okay.
So I just, we just made.
Now they're taking the back portion as well.
Yeah.
Which I'll allow them to do.
I mean, it has nothing to do with the AR, but that was part of that process.
That's why it happened, okay.
Yeah.
What a guy, yeah?
Yeah.
All right, and it's still got frontage. Planning Department, any comments?
Nope, it meets the, it meets the condition that was set in the special apartment for the project, so.
I motion to endorse the A and R for 221 North Hampton Street.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right.
Now, I, I have six copies, but you just sign the, the minimum, I'll, you know, whatever you wanna do.
Three and a Mylar, is that what you?
Um, Mylar and a copy goes to the applicant and then I need one for the city clerk, planning department, assessors, and, um, city engineer.
Yeah, might as well give them, give them one each and keep five.
Oh, there's a curb over there. Can you spin that whole thing around?
Oh. That's my fault.
He'll stop them on me and I'll pass it back.
Well, here, I was gonna. Is this through?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Right, check on it later.
They need to make them so that they're carbonated.
What's that?
Sign once that just passes through all of them.
Our new store coming in, they're stepping forward.
I haven't read that recently, but they're in Florida still.
Yeah, like they, they really care.
Oh, they care.
Yeah.
He cares.
Yeah, it's just when he's gonna pop it in.
Well, he's hoping to pop it in, he's not, he's not a.
Yeah, I know. Few issues. There are no more problems, they're just issues.
That's how we look at it.
Yeah. I was collected one day and I was told that.
You were collected one day, only once?
I had a lecture, like every day of my life.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry, it's fine. Thank you.
Very good, thanks a bunch.
All right, good luck.
Be well.
All right. Moving, excuse me, right along, uh, new business, a request for special permit for 396 Main. Someone here. Sir, come on up. Just gonna go, why don't you take the podium there and introduce yourself and give us a rundown of what you're looking to do here.
Good evening, gentlemen, my name's Todd Anthony, uh, representing 396 Main Street, uh, we're here for a special permit. Uh, we're, we are trying to lease the front of the building to a, uh, a sports apparel, dan- a dance wear type of a company, kind of, they kinda coexist with our studio, our, uh, our wife's dance studio that's there. And so we had to get a special permit, 'cause I understand we, we can't just put a retail establishment in there, so, that's why we're here.
Is that section currently a gym, or was it?
It, it was a gym. He, he, he went AWOL, unfortunately.
I see.
They can't find him.
We can find him, but he, uh, he, uh, we don't know exactly what happened there, but. He's paying his rent until he's, until his lease is up, so that's a good thing.
So, I'm sorry, um, have you received a copy of the email that had the comments from the?
Yep.
City engineer, is that what it was? Um, so there's some questions about the parking stuff?
Yeah, and, and it all came new to us, we, you know, we've been there for 31 years, our father-in-law just gave us this building to take over from him, as he's, you guys probably know Harry, he's an older guy, and, uh, we're being told that there's some of the parking spaces are impeding on a existing property line that's already there, but seeing as we've been there for 31 years and, uh, there's never seemed to have been an issue, we're not sure exactly what, if anything, we need to do, 'cause it's, it's never been an issue. Those lines have been there for as long as we've been there, the parking lines. With the flow of traffic, the way it flows through that particular building, our wives have a dance studio, most of the time, there are, there are cars who park, but we have, if we don't, if we exclude that right-hand side there, that they're saying, they're saying impeding all of those parking spaces, we have in excess of 50, 50 parking spaces, which according to the regs for the town and city, more than ample amount to, to, to care for all the people that would, may park there at any given time. Traffic flow there is typically a lot of its drop-off, pick-up, drop-off, uh, but some people do park, but that came up, so we looked at each other and went, I don't, it's all news to us, I don't, I don't know, I mean, if that was surveyed, by the way, back when we built that property, we bought that, it was an existing machine shop, some of you might remember, we added that back building on, it was surveyed way back when, I believe by Heritage, and the debris, the paving did that, so for the, for that to be off, like they're saying, you guys are showing that that's off, is amazing to me, Ted, so it's, that's a, quite a, if it's off that far, I mean, it looks in excess of six feet at least, so I don't.
A little map there, can you come over and show us where that?
Sure.
Here, here's the, also.
You have the colored one.
That's the area with, um, the city's assessor system now.
This is Route 10.
Yep.
This is will milk away, this side over here.
Yeah.
This shows our paved driveway, but according to the property line, it looks like it, it comes here.
Goes there.
And so we've, as you can see, this has been like this since we built it and there never has been a problem ever, so, um, we're like, oh, again, this is all new to us, 'cause you just took this thing over. So, but if I just use these line spaces that we have here and here all along this way, there's like over 50 spots, there's an additional 19, I don't know, we'll do whatever we need to do to cor- you know, to do that.
The owner of this lot?
That's, uh, Bernicle.
Bernicle.
Yeah.
And I just wanna say that this is being pulled from an online system that is as accurate as the online system could be, so, there's a, there's a disclaimer on, in the computer system that says that if you really need accurate information, then you need to rely on your legal description, you need to get a surveyor, so.
These lines could be wrong.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's hard to know without, you know, having a, a truly surveyed.
We went out there today to look for a mark, you know, the pole, but what Bernie did is he put bushes and he put rocks, these like big boulders, kinda letting us know, don't go past this, and that's about five feet behind that, so we've always said, okay, we've always, that's where we'll push the snow, no further than that, you know, when we plow and that's, that's what we've always done, so.
So you said ignoring this section?
We have over 50, 50.
You have 58?
Like 52, 53 parking spaces. The shop, by, by the way, the shop that's going in there, her hours are gonna be, she's be like a 10 to 6 type of a thing, um, we've got eight dedicated spaces all across the front for her, 'cause she's gonna be in this little building here, this whole front end, which, and it's about, uh, 2,400 square feet, so, right, she'd need about eight spaces, but we were thinking, boy, she's got all these too, 'cause rarely do people from the studio park, that, what happens, they typically come in and they go this way, 'cause the dance studio entrance is right. Yeah, it's right here, sometimes they would usually go in here and they go out here, so it kinda flows this way.
My kids took karate there, so I was the dad to pick up.
So you know, Teddy's, Teddy's upstairs, so you guys park here if you stay, right?
Great businesses in there.
Can I just ask a question, can you tell me what the square footage of the dance studio is?
Ted, do you know the back building, 60 by 100, two stories?
60 by 100, two stories.
12,000?
12,000.
I can tell you that one of the things that happens is there's typically plenty of parking, except at the pick-up and drop-off.
Yeah, it's the busy hours.
And during those, it can get real crowded and cramped in there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
People will double up and do whatever they can.
Well, our, our, you're right, and our thought was that her traffic, because this, if she's here, it's basically gonna flow this way, as you know, most people don't go through there, they go, they kinda go either like this or they go like this, so, and then she, she's gonna be open from like 10 to 6, she said, that's basically the hour she's thinking.
That's about it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so one of the other questions had to do with the do not enter sign, are these both two-way entrances, or how do you run that now?
No, it, it's marked, there's arrows that mark it this way.
Yeah.
What we'll do is we'll have to put a, he asked us, can we put a sign up that says do not enter? Yeah, we'll do that and we'll also gonna, we'll paint exit.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, exit only, that's what I wanna do.
Yeah.
'Cause, you know, we have the problems too with the truckers that come in there and try to turn around and they've knocked our signs down and all that stuff.
Okay.
Numerous times. Nothing you can do about that, but.
Have we done a calculation of the parking spaces or?
I've tried, but I guess, you know, without, so, I'm, was going off of what I had in the application and what I could pull off the assessors for a building footprint, so I, so I'm looking at 800 square feet for the karate dojo, which translates to, all right, so for amusement facilities, it's one space for each 150 square, square feet, and for other professional services, it's one for each 100, for each 300 square feet, so, so the dojo is, I'm not, you know, what category does that go under? The original special permit that was provided to this property in 1985 was a use regulation for amusement and recreation service indoor to allow the petitioner to conduct a dance and physical fitness and related activity center. So that's, so that's the, the use category that the original permit was, was under, and for amusement facilities, it's, it's one space for each 150 square feet. Um, so that would apply theoretically to the dance studio and the karate, which, that's why I'm asking, what's the square footage in, in the dance studio, because if your building total is 13, 5, 60, and you've got 80, 800 square feet for the dojo, you have 800 square feet that's being used for storage, you're proposing 2,400 square feet for retail, which is eight spaces, so it's the dance studio that really is kind of the big number, depending on whatever that square footage of that space is, and depending on what amusement facilities, or whether it gets placed under other professional services. If it's placed under amusement facilities, I think it calculates out, based on just subtracting out what's remaining, which I'm seeing to be 95, 60, is 63 spaces. If you categorize it under other professional spa- other professional services, it's 31 spaces.
It doesn't seem like dance studio was an amusement to me.
That's exactly, so I went to look at the definitions of what an amusement facility is. Those just wanna not be on the table. Um. Amusement and Recreation Services, establishment engaged in providing amusement or entertainment for a fee or admission charge and include, but not limited to, the following activities: dance halls, studios, theatrical producers, bands, orchestras, other musical entertainment, bowling alleys, billiards, pool establishment, commercial sports such as arena, rings, racetracks, public golf courses, and coin-operated devices, amusement parks, swimming pools, carnival operations, and game parlors. So, to me, it doesn't fit under that category, so I would likely put it more under the, under the professional services, which then makes the parking work, and, you know, in my own opinion, this, this site is entirely impervious surface.
Yeah.
There's no vegetation, I don't know how the stormwater is managed right now, so that's a question that maybe I have based on, I don't wanna see more parking there, if, if the uses can accommodate what's there, I think that's reasonable and that makes sense.
Right.
But I don't wanna go against the regulations either, so.
Right, so, but, but our real determination is whether we think that the dance studio is amusement versus other professional.
Other prof- unless there's another category, I mean, there's, it doesn't match up, the table of uses and the parking don't necessarily match up.
Right.
So it could be listed in here in the table of uses as something, but then there's no.
Right.
Nothing for it in parking, so you have to sort of just put it in a category. I think other professional services makes sense.
Yeah.
But I leave it up to the board.
I mean, my opinion is that amusement is like where you're hosting the public for shows and that sort of stuff, where you might have the, but, I mean, if someone feels differently.
I don't, I am a little bit concerned, th- there's another coin to this, in that we create a safe situation for parking.
Right.
Obviously, that's, you know, part of our daily work here.
Yeah.
And I know that when it gets busy during those key hours, it can get a little dicey, and adding this in might increase that, but I, I'm guessing there were a lot of people, 'cause I saw them, that were exercising there before, I think it really doesn't change it, in my opinion, how many would show up for a dance, I think we're okay, that's my take personally, that we're okay in other uses.
Are these spots all recently painted, I mean, looking at this picture?
Just did them in the fall.
Okay.
And there's, there's an additional 19 spots there that I'm not including in that 50.
Okay.
And if, if push came to shove and we had to change these because of, we are impeding, we could always turn them this way, you know, like a curb park, we could still fit 10 extra spaces in there if we had to reline that, you know what I mean?
What about actually painting flow lines?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, that's the plan, uh, uh, big arrows.
The one-way arrows and stuff?
Exit only, you know, yes, absolutely, that's exactly what we're gonna do.
The other element that the board needs to think about also, under the special permit, you have to not only look at the internal flow of cars, but also the internal flow of pedestrians.
Pedestrians, right, that's what I was gonna ask.
So, so that needs to be thought about on how the pedestrians.
Yep.
Enter each of the, I don't know exactly where the do- front doors are.
That's a good question, it's a good, good, good thing to bring up, but, but for this particular front-end building, the dance, the, the main entrance to the dance studio and karate's right here.
Yeah.
The entrance here, there's a door entrance here and there's a side door, right, but these two cars are right there, there's, there's two entries.
Yeah.
So they'll come through here or through here, this, we're, we're gonna designate as like a loading area for her, although she told us, it's basically, you know, UPS driver boxes, but we'll designate that, there's a big space right in the front of that building that he could park, but there's an entrance here and there's an entrance here.
Okay, so the idea being that people can park on either side and won't have to travel.
We're, our thinking is, yeah, we'll direct them here, this, these spots for her.
Yeah.
And, and sure, you guys know too, she's gonna be 10 to 6, but the dance studio doesn't really kick till about 3 o'clock, they start at like 3 o'clock, so there's a little overlap with her business, but not crazy, you know, uh, so there would be some overlap there, in terms of the time.
You have to have, uh. You can't park in there too.
We have a couple designated handicap spots already, yes?
Yeah, there, I think there's.
Yeah.
Two or three, I mean, two on one side and I think one on the other.
Yeah.
What's the number of the regs?
For handicap, I think it's, uh, 12, hold on. Um.
Good. The more.
Okay, so, more than 15 spaces, you need one handicap parking, uh, 25, 40, you need two, 40, not more than 100, you need three.
Okay.
So I'd say three.
So we need three?
We have to designate.
Designate three as handicap only.
And sign, right.
Marked with the, um, and, yeah, marked with a sign, I, I, you know, as Jim and I will say, as sitting on members of the Commission on Disability, that if you put it on the ground and the snow covers it, then somebody isn't gonna know, so you need to have some signage.
Sure.
And I think that the handicap parking regs, we, the city say that as well.
Where are those going?
Pardon me?
Where will those go?
Uh, we'll have to take a look when we get over there, but we'll, we'll place them where they need to go, obviously, we're gonna, we'll probably put them as close to the entrances as possible.
I mean, the closer the door, right.
That's great, because when people come in and out here, it gets real crowded in that one spot.
This spot right here, we've been using, you know, the owner's cars, but that could easily be one, 'cause there's an entrance like right there and then over here, of course, of course, we got, we got exits in the back, but I don't wanna put one there, so we'll have to come up with another one here, probably here, these two areas, the front corner there where people enter.
I mean, if you try to put them near, 'cause you do have three or four entrances, so closer you can get to each of those entrances, I think, better.
Yeah, that makes sense.
With the pedestrian.
Our wives will be upset, because those are their spots, but that's okay.
It's all right, you can blame us for that.
No, I don't.
I just wanna make sure that I know where my truck is gonna be.
And, uh, one of the other issues raised here is the, uh, snow storage and snowplow, what do you do with that typically now?
Well, right now, what we, what we've been doing, what we've always done is we, we, we plow a little here, but we're using generally plow right into this, this is a grass area.
Yeah.
Push snow here, we push snow all along through here and this back corner, right, all along the backside, and again, this is what we've always done, and it's never been an issue.
Right.
That's how we've been there.
It's never been an issue, so, that's what we've always done.
I mean, is there space back here that's not ending up on other people's property?
No, it, it's, it's, this is all like basically trees.
Okay.
In here, small trees and, there's, like, there, if you see this, there's an embankment here, it's probably.
Right.
Seven or eight feet off of this, and he, he's filled all this in, if you've seen, he's totally filled it, but this spot, he left all open, 'cause he's got boulders and bushes, kinda like letting us know, that's the mark, so that's what we pushed up.
So you can push it all up to the front of the parking spots?
And if, of course, get the show, we could actually, we could push, 'cause no one really parks out here, very rarely, we could put snow there if we had to, you know what I mean, we, we could actually use that back corner if we wanted to. We push it off the lot, but we've never left it on there.
We're not waiting.
Uh, good, another thing that we're doing, we're doing a, we're doing an HVAC renovation as well, so we're gonna have all lights, we got lights now, but with all four corners, you're gonna, with all the new LEDs, we're gonna light that up a little bit better, 'cause we're thinking, we've gotta put a dumpster here too.
Facing down?
Uh, well, they're in a building, they'll be facing down, what are they, about six inches, they're, they're fairly small, right, those LEDs we're gonna put on the outside, they're fairly small, but they're really quite good, so that's something else that we're doing, that's our summer job, the renovation, the HVAC.
And what do you do for trash on the building?
Uh, we're gonna put a dumpster right here, the thought is to put a dumpster here.
Okay.
But we have done, 'cause we, the boys, our brother-in-law's on the industrial residential, we have been using their dumpsters forever, we've never had a need, reason for a dumpster there, we're gonna put one in.
Okay.
A small one.
Yeah.
And we're gonna put it on a pad, we're gonna put on a pad and we're gonna put a, like, a piece of fencing so it doesn't look unsightly to the road, type of thing.
And, uh, covered and.
Locked.
Regular, yeah.
'Cause it, you know, it'll be full.
Yeah.
Every night if we don't.
Right.
'Cause we did, we, we used to have one back here, it was getting filled up.
Okay.
It was mysterious, every day.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, that looks good.
I mean, it's humorous, Lisa, don't misinterpret, but how about a new rug for Sensei Ten? Ten, excuse me.
He just, uh, well, actually, we just took care, as I said, we did a whole bunch of stuff in his room, it's all, it's all better, he's a pretty happy guy.
So let's go through these, um, just the criteria real quick, so we can make sure we cover everything.
Okay.
Um, conformance with the provisions of the ordinances of the City of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and all applicable rules and regulations of state and federal agencies, you know, that, um, protection of city amenities and abiding properties, then minimizing any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique or important natural, scenic, or historic features, don't think that's an issue. Minimization of traffic and safety impacts of the proposed development on adjacent highways or roads, and communities, and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the sites we talked about, you're gonna designate that one exit as an exit only, right?
This one right here.
Yep.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
And you're gonna mark arrows.
Arrows here, um, exit only, we'll put the sign up as well, we'll do both, we'll do the, the ground and, uh, 'cause you have to say, people don't look down on the sign, and then we'll designate three handicapped.
Three parking, or handicap parking spaces near the entrances.
Near the entrances to both of those.
Okay.
Just say those gonna be conditions, or?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, did you get those?
Um, well, we'll review at the end.
Okay.
There's others.
Um, and, uh, adequacy of methods of disposal of sewage and refuse in the drainage of surface and subsurface waters, we talked about the garbage, um, it's a sporting goods dance studio, right, so is there any unusual, or, uh, store?
It's dance wear, it's dance wear, it's dance wear.
So no unusual garbage or waste or anything like that, right?
She said she gets box, she gets basically flat boxes, she said, it's not, she's a, if you, where is she, on Main Street now, Ted, Union Street? Cottage Street, she's on Cottage Street, so she's, she's just moving over.
Um, adequacy of protecting wetlands, water sheds, offers, and well areas, doesn't really apply to this one, um, adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the city's water supply and distribution systems, sewage collection and treatment systems, fire protection in streets, I don't think she's probably using large quantities of water or anything like that, right?
No.
Uh, provision for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the normal operation of the establishment, so you said you were gonna sort of designate the front area as a loading area?
This, this, where this door is, it's actually bigger than it looks, but, right, this spot right here, what I was thinking we'll do is, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll put a, mark the lines and, you know, like a loading area for that UPS driver, so he knows.
Yeah, like hash rock, so, so UPS stuff?
It's basically UPS, she said, so.
Is that another condition, 'cause that, those aren't things that are actually marked on the plan?
Right.
You know, you're verbalizing this now, so, it, it, there's no point of reference when the decision is crafted and these plans are attached to it.
Yeah.
There's no reference to that, so you wanna make that a condition, so that it's clear and that we know that that area is supposed to be designated as a, a loading area?
Yeah, we should.
I would think so, right?
Yeah, we could do that easily.
Where is it, I, I don't, I can't see from here, so. It's by the studio.
Right, this front, this is door, this area right here, right over here, yeah. Go over, this will be a loading area. Actually, I thought I wrote that on you, on your thing, I'm sure I wrote loading area.
Okay, I'll have to go back and look, you may have, you could send that back down.
And the lighting, you said you were gonna, um, you're installing lighting?
Additional external lights, yes.
Downward facing?
Downward facing on, on all corners, all corners, like all these, any of that, anything that we think's a little bit dark, we're gonna lighten up, and that's gonna be done when we do all this.
Okay. Where, do you know where you're putting those now?
Ted, you, you show him, he's, he's got the, uh, he's doing all the plotting for that, so.
You thought you weren't gonna have to come up here.
We're, Ted, the lights.
Yes, what are we?
So presently, they're already here, here, there's one facing here, there's one front, there's one in the corner, so what we're gonna add, and there's, the back is, but we're gonna add here, and then along the side of the building here, we're gonna add some additional, 'cause it does get a little dark, and then also on the front of the building here, 'cause these areas directly right here get a little bit dark.
Okay, so you're gonna.
Six, six, yeah.
Like those locations, or the one on the front?
Yeah, one, two, and then you're gonna go. There's already presently one there.
Okay.
And then we have to add one right there.
Okay. So I think we should make that a condition as well.
Right, sure might as well.
The lighting in there. Um, and the internal traffic control, we talked about the painting and the, and the signage, which I think was already mentioned, um, efforts to integrate the development of the existing landscape through design of features such as vegetative buffers or attentive open, open space, I think that's already covered in the existing structure, um, there's no removal of vegetation planned or tree removal or anything related to this.
No, there's not, there's nothing there.
Consistency to see the development with respect to setback area placement of parking, architectural style landscaping, structures already built and everything's in place, um, adequacy of the measures to prevent pollution of surface or groundwater to minimize erosion, I think that's already constructed and everything, um, and adequacy of methods to ensure the use will not constitute a nuisance by reason of unacceptable level of air, water pollution, excessive noise, or virtually fragrance, flagrant structures or accessories, I don't think that's an issue with this use. So I think that covers those criteria. Anybody else have any other questions?
Ask the public?
Yeah, I will in a sec, does any of the members have any other questions?
No.
Planning Department have any other questions?
I'll review the conditions when we're done, though, I'm gonna make sure I have it out.
Anybody else here have any comments or questions regarding this application? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I motion to approve the special permit request for 396 Main Street.
With the conditions that.
With the conditions.
So these are the conditions that I have, um, one, designate the north exit as an exit only, um, two, mark arrows on the parking lot to designate traffic flow.
Yep.
Um, lighting will be provided on the four corners of the building, is that right?
Uh, it's really the, on the sides of the front building, is that what you guys call it?
Sides of the front.
The sides of the front building.
Front building, and lighting will be installed in a downward-facing motion.
Yeah, what's that language we use with the dark sky stuff?
It's the dark skies standards, okay. Um, and then there'll be three spaces of handicap parking?
Yeah, near the entrances.
Near entrances of all three, or just with the new use, or?
Well, I think there's, one.
This is what I'm gonna do, we use this one and then one here and one here.
Two near the side entrance to the, um, the new store.
Side, hold on, entrance to.
One near the existing.
To new store, okay.
And one near the existing entrance to the dance studio and karate studio.
Near access to dance studio, okay. Okay. Okay, those are the four that I have.
Okay. I think that's everything, right?
Yeah, they're going to put in the dumpster anyways.
What was it?
We don't need to make the dumpster condition.
Right, that's already in the...
Um, it's on the plan, so I think it's okay.
Okay. So that's Jim's motion. Give me a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing, okay. So, uh, what's our timeline here for this?
So, um, we have fourteen days to draft the decision. It's half drafted, so it'll be hopefully by the end of the week. And then, um, it will get submitted to the city clerk's office, and there's a twenty-day appeal period. And then once the twenty-day appeal period is over, then you need to go into the city clerk's office and get your certification, and then you can file that at the registry of deeds. All right?
All right. Thanks a lot, guys, good luck.
Take care, good luck.
All right. Moving right along. Uh, administrative item, discussion regarding recreational marijuana establishments and zoning. So Jessica, how do you want to handle this? Did you...
Um, well, first of all, I think if people, there's a handout here that's a, a four-page fact sheet that was provided by KP Law that gives a summary of the recreational marijuana law as currently passed by the voters of Massachusetts. So, um, this, this handout's been given to the board, and this is, I think, a really good succinct, um, explanation of where the law is at right now. Um, I, I, I don't know. I mean, you've gone to a couple of trainings as well, Jessie, so I don't know if you, if we just want to review some of the key points of it, or sort of the things that I'm aware of that the board, I feel like, needs to think about and discuss, and that the members of the public in here, I don't, I...
Sure, you want to do just a little background, and then we can open up the public comment?
Sure.
I mean, there's no, just to be clear, there's no action items on for this. We're just sort of, there was a request, and I think it was a good one to sort of get the ball rolling on the issue and start talking about it, because we do need to draft bylaws, and that's a lengthy process, and this whole thing is happening. So, um, I think this is a good way to start, but there's nothing that's happening today as far as a vote or an action. Um, but I think there's going to be a lot of periods here in the process for public comment and input. Um, and I'm thrilled to see so many people who are here already today. Um, so I think this will be a good way to just sort of start talking about it and get some more information going back and forth.
So I, I'll just note that, um, in the planning community and my fellow planners across the state, there's, um, you know, there's been a lot of meetings and a lot of workshops on the recreational marijuana law. Um, and a lot of the concerns really have to do with the timelines that have been set by the law, and how quickly municipalities are expected to come up with local regulations based on the state's timeline. So, um, the, the, the big concern for me right now is that, um, is, well, the timelines have been bumped already six months by the state legislators. So we're looking right now at, um, that once the state creates the Cannabis Control Commission, the CCC, their initial regulations need to be adopted by March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. On April first, two thousand and eighteen, they can start to accept applications from, um, from those that want to be licensed under recreational marijuana. That gives municipalities two weeks, two weeks to get regulations in place. Now, that is if they go up to the deadline. If they release these regulations months earlier, then we'll be in a lot better shape.
Right.
Um, if they take the entire time to draft these regulations and understand that, um, that this is under the, um, the Treasury Department, where medical marijuana is under the Department of Public Health, it's unclear right now how, how much these regs are going to be similar, how much they're going to be different. There's no indication at all on whether we can just use the medical marijuana regulations and just use that for recreational. It's completely unclear. So until we really have regs that come down from the state, I, I don't think it's a wise idea to put very specific zoning in place in regards to locations for recreational marijuana until we really know what those provisions are going to be. They may have, like in medical marijuana, they have provisions that are already in there in terms of the distance to schools. I presume they're going to have something similar. Is it going to be the same distance as medical marijuana? Is it going to be different? I don't know. So, you know, so that's sort of my concern is, is drafting something without having the state regs in place. When I, the workshop that I did go to, they had a representative from Treasury, and they have no budget, they have no software, they have no staff, they have nothing. They are working from absolutely nothing. And so I think that they are going to take as much time as they possibly can to develop these regulations, because they have no staff.
Yeah.
They have no budget, they have no computer system in place to actually manage this license procedure. And they have to create all of this from scratch. So, so they're, they're, they're in a bit of a panic themselves, I think, a little bit. So, um, so I guess it's the timelines that I'm a little bit concerned about. Um, I'm concerned about, you know, just, you know, being aware that these are two different state departments that are managing medical versus recreational. Um, that, and there's also some interesting provisions within the law as currently drafted that in order to completely prohibit recreational marijuana establishments can only be accomplished through a vote of the voters. So city council, planning board cannot completely prohibit it. It has to go through a vote of the voters. Um, if they wanted to limit the number, it has to be through a vote of the voters. The other interesting part of the way that it's currently drafted is that marijuana cafes, which I think is, is, could be a huge concern, um, again, has to go through a vote of the voters. So you can't prohibit the onsite consumption. So there could be a recreational facility where somebody could walk in, buy a product, consume it right there, walk out the door. Um, so that, again, has to be a vote of the voters. There's nothing that the city boards or councils can do to address that. Now, that being said, there's about twenty-five bills in the state legislature right now that, um, are looking to amend this in various ways, shapes, and forms. So again, what, who knows? I mean, it's like, it's really this kind of unknown on what's happening. And so that's the little bit scary part to me. Uh, so, you know, that's, I guess, sort of where I think the board needs to sort of think about, does it make sense to put a moratorium in place until we have the regs in place, and then we can sort of thoughtfully put something together? There's a lot of communities that are going that route. The moratorium can only be a temporary moratorium, and really, it has to be, they're saying, the, the stuff that I've seen is no more than a year. So that timing, again, is really important of when the moratorium takes effect and when its end date is, you want to make sure that that end date gives you enough time after the regs come out in order to craft something. So that's the other piece of it, if the, if a moratorium was something that the community wanted to move forward on, is being really clear about what that deadline is. And there's a lot of inconsistencies in the law right now. Um, you know, they, they have definitions like, if in a medical marijuana facility, um, you can have a recreational facility in the same area. Well, there's no definition of what same area is. Is it zoning district? Is it the building? Is it within a certain distance, um, from that facility? Again, all of that will probably come out in the regs, but without having the regs in place, it's kind of hard to craft zoning around it.
Right, well, and also, because we have to defer the state regs, we can't sort of take a guess and put, I mean, if, if we were, if we had like unilateral power, we could spend the time and craft regulations for how we want this to come into our community. But we, we can't do that unilaterally. And so, I mean, when we had the medical marijuana, we got a lot of direction from the state regs, and there was very little... So it gives us an area to sort of think about, like, okay, how can we work within their rules? But we can't work within their rules if we don't know their rules. So the, the timeline crunch is a hard one, and I also think we have to be cognizant of not, um, you know, maybe overreaching with a moratorium if there are things that we're going to want to start doing sooner and not wanting to block that out entirely. But the other thing is not getting, if you do want to do a moratorium, doing it too soon, because you can, I mean, if you did a moratorium right now, the year doesn't even get you
Right.
any of the bonus time that you need.
Exactly.
And coupled with that, the fact that, you know, I mean, I think realistically, it's going to take, even if we rushed everything, several months to get bylaws in place. Um, I mean, we've done much simpler bylaws in the last few years, and it's not, it's not like we just vote on something up here and we're done. You know, it goes with the ordinance subcommittee and the city council, and back and forth with public hearings. So, um, I think the timing of it is going to be, um, it's definitely the trickiest part of all of it, I think, is just figuring out logistically how we're going to make that work. Um, not to mention then getting to the point where how do we want to implement this as a community, and what do we want to do, and where do we want to do it? So, um, I guess we can open this up to public comment if there's people who have questions or comments or thoughts about what's going on. If you can just come up when you want to talk, go to the podium, just introduce us, just use your, introduce yourself just for the record.
Uh, my name's Phil Knight, I live at twelve Ballard Street. Um, so maybe you could just kind of give me or all of us kind of a quick civics lesson on how bylaws become enacted in a, in a city?
So the way, the way that it's worked here is that we'll, we will, I, I mean, we can go all the way back to the beginning and say that I, I think that there are groups of planners that are working maybe with the PVPC to sort of craft a general bylaw that people, towns can sort of use to do what they want to do within it, to give us a structure. Um, a template, perfect. And, um, so in theory, once we have state regulations, we can then come back here to the planning board and look at a template and figure out at a public hearing, you know, what direction do we think we want to go and how we want to implement this? And it may be, you know, moving down the path of putting it in specific neighborhoods. I mean, we're talking about a lot of different stuff, right? Like the, the growth in production of marijuana, the, the sale of it, the consumption of it, you know, whether it's edibles, all that stuff. I mean, there's a lot of different facets that maybe want to be allowed in some areas and not in others, or maybe want to be allowed everywhere, maybe in the same place or not. Um, so then we would come up with a proposed bylaw that we would submit to the city council, and their ordinance subcommittee would eventually have a joint committee meeting with us, another public hearing, where we would talk with them and members of the community with their input, and come up with a, then, second proposal that would go to the city council at a city council meeting, again, another public forum. Um, and any of these can take as long or short as we need. I mean, we can have multiple hearings at the planning board or at the joint committee with the ordinance subcommittee hearings, or at the city council, and then the city council would ultimately pass a bylaw at some point. Um, so that's sort of the process. That's why I was saying, there's a lot of steps here to get more feedback, which is great, because there's five of us up here, and we may all have things that we are thinking, but it certainly doesn't represent what everyone does. So it's nice to have people chime in on these things rather than us being alone in a room trying to guess what's best. But, um, there's going to be lots of opportunity on this, I think, for people who want to participate and, and speak their mind on the issue.
Well, uh, well, from a personal perspective, my viewpoint would be, it should be treated exactly like alcohol is, um, in the town. I, I think that would be the most straightforward way to handle it. Um, but I'm curious, what are the current, uh, rules and regulations that differentiate between, uh, medical marijuana and the alcohol rules and bylaws?
You can't sell yet recreational.
Well, medical.
Medical, because that seems to be the kind of the closest...
Medical has, um, has a, um, their regulations are about this thick. And it, it addresses everything from, um, the seed to sale, it addresses security, it addresses location, it addresses the licensing procedure. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, I'd say probably an eighty-page document. And, and from that is where myself and a bunch of other planners worked with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to craft a model medical marijuana ordinance that we could all sort of use, and it all came from those regs. Um, and then from there, we could bring it back to our communities and do some local tweaking, but there are certain things that you have to be held to under the medical marijuana.
Right, and so, I mean, one of the big differences between medical marijuana a year ago and alcohol was that marijuana, for everyone who didn't have a prescription, was illegal, right? And so it's a little bit of a different game than it is now, right? So, so that comparison is a little bit different, and the medical, the recreational is a little bit different. So those things, I mean, it's still all federally illegal, um, and there's all sorts of issues with that that still remain. Um, and so it's not quite, I mean, you can't, maybe the recreational marijuana and the alcohol stuff is a little more similar when you're talking about it's legal for adults and that sort of stuff. Um, but I mean, there's also, there's some limits on alcohol. I mean, I think one of the options under this ballot initiative is that you can limit it to the number of alcohol licenses for liquor establishments, right? So I mean, right now, there's a, there's a strict cap on the number of...
Twenty percent, I think, of the...
Twenty percent, right, yeah.
So that's the maximum?
No, no, so, so the vote of the voters, they can, they can, and it's all in this handout. So if you, um, they can look at it from, hold on, did you take, did you take a handout?
I did. I'll return this one now.
Um, so you can prohibit it completely, you can limit the number to fewer than twenty percent of the number of licenses issued within the municipality for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises under chapter one thirty-eight.
Which also isn't clear whether that's just the statutory ones or the above quota ones that are voted on by the legislature, which is two different numbers, which is another
There's another bit of confusion. Um, and then limiting the number to a number, fewer than the number of medical marijuana treatment centers. So we do have one that's been permitted, medical marijuana in, in East Hampton, and it's currently under build-out, and it should be opening within the next couple of months. So.
You asked about the difference between medical marijuana and alcohol. One of the big ones, because it is federally illegal, is the fact that they can't use banks.
Right.
And that's the security aspect of it, and why their regs are so stringent on that and included in that to make sure that they have, you know, uh, safe spaces, safe entries, um, you know, so there is a big difference, right?
It's, it's basically an all cash business for marijuana, so it adds, in addition to the fact that when the regulations for medical marijuana were passed, marijuana was illegal for the vast majority of Massachusetts residents, so there was a black market for that, there's also just a high volume of cash. So it changes some of the dynamics from a regular liquor store in East Hampton, or something like that.
So what were some of the complications or issues that you ran into when you were doing, uh, the bylaws for medical marijuana?
I, I, I would say it was in terms of the location, because we knew that the Mills was a location that we had businesses that were looking, because they could rent thirty thousand square feet in, in one of the Mills for grow operation. It can be highly secure, it's in a build-out in a greenhouse, so, so the build-out of Mills and using urban agriculture sort of is the, is the way to think about it, in terms of the production in the Mills. And so, you know, we have one that, that is permitted, I have others that are coming to me, because they can, they can set up shop, there is a vast open space for them to, to move their equipment in and start doing production. So that is, that is what makes East Hampton attractive, in terms of the growing side.
But the other, the other wrinkle to that was that the state regs on the medical stuff really eliminated a lot of the arguments. I mean, there were, it was very strict about the structures. I mean, a lot of the stuff when we went through the public hearing was, you know, you have to continue to satisfy these state obligations, which they already did, you know, so I mean, they, they, there were, and that's part of the concern here, is that perhaps the recreational, I would hope, and at one of the meetings I was at with some of the treasury officials, they've said they were communicating with the Department of Public Health about their regulations and that sort of thing. If you get sort of these, not necessarily strict, but very descriptive and detailed regulations that are already managing the day-to-day operation, it might make it a little easier for us, but if you get sort of more of a clean slate where each city and town has their own input on it, it makes it a lot harder, and it also creates a lot of those little points where there may be more debate and more, if not contention, at least sort of difference of opinion on, on how to go down those roads. So that's part of the problem with not knowing what Boston's going to tell us to do at this point, because it doesn't tell us how much leeway we have and which areas we need to really focus on. The one thing we had to deal with that was big was the locations, sort of proximity to school, that sort of stuff was already regulated by the state, but it, that kind of stuff, where do we want this as a community, was the part that was left to us in the medical realm.
Yeah, I'd like to add, medical marijuana, when that went through, everybody was saying, oh, I can go to my doctor and I can get a script and go and get medical marijuana. It's not that easy. Talking to some of the doctors, they're going to be very apprehensive about issuing medical marijuana scripts. You can't just walk in and get them. It's, some doctors, you may never get one from them, because they've never issued them, and they don't want any part of it. So to try and find doctors to issue scripts for that is going to be an issue also. Although there are some doctors that I talked to that do, that will issue that type of script.
Anything else?
That's it for now. Yeah, I mean, you, you mentioned that they're not required to release these regulations until, what, you said, 2018?
Uh, March fifteenth, 2018. So as of now, currently recreational marijuana is not allowed in, in, as a, as a retail facility in the city.
It's, it's up to the state, and then up to us, we have to regulate it, and it's going to be, it's not going to be easy.
That, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Hey, folks.
How you doing?
Paul McNeil, Nine Taft Avenue.
Thank you.
I think it's great that you're hosting this conversation. I'm a public health professional, my primary focus is substance abuse prevention, so I'm a substance abuse prevention specialist. And one thing, right out of the gate, I just think it was very intelligent to think about using the mill spaces and not those downtown walkable spaces near all the elementary schools. I think that was very intelligent, because one of the biggest concerns I have with young people is over-exposure and over-normalization to use. I think that's one thing we didn't really do right with alcohol from the very beginning, which is, where do we put liquor stores, where do we put bars? And at that point, it was like, wherever they want to pop up. So it's really nice to see a responsible, thoughtful planning process, and I'm glad that I can be a part of that, at least have some ideas. Cafes, I would love to see cafes manage like the most responsible bars someday. Unfortunately, there's no way we can responsibly manage cafes, because we have no idea how much marijuana is okay to consume on-site, edible, dosage, smokable, like we have no idea what these numbers are, what they mean, what the long-term, short-term implications are for health, for public safety, for transportation, no clue. So I just urge this, this group to continue to be prudent and thoughtful and responsible about thinking about cafes and recommending something one way or another. Again, it would be, I think, shortsighted and unfair to say, well, we can't give cafes marijuana, but we can with alcohol. That being said, we have so much more data and research on what alcohol is, and what it does to the brain and to your abilities, once you leave that establishment, get behind the wheel, et cetera. So please, continue to be prudent, because we don't know what cafes are, or what they mean yet. As far as marketing, I'm, I've always been concerned about young people getting exposed to, to substances that you can grow a dependence to. For example, if you think about alcohol is not, it's not in vogue to, to target kids anymore, it used to be a little bit more in vogue, but then you think about last year's Super Bowl commercials, and the most memorable commercial, when we surveyed middle schoolers here, was that little puppy-dog commercial, which was a Budweiser commercial. I don't know if you remember the puppy-dog commercial. It had nothing to do with alcohol, but kids are already developing that, that positive relationship with that brand, so they're still targeting young people, and that's something I'm really concerned about, with a new, big addictive substance like tobacco or alcohol. So that being said, I think it's great the way we've addressed marijuana medically being unmarketed and sort of unmarked, as you see a building. I think that's very intelligent, something we did not do well with alcohol, in my honest opinion, still struggle with, something we tried to correct with tobacco after thirty years of public health advocacy, which is no ads on TV, which is a huge win. No ads, no one smoking in ads on the street or in billboards. So trying to prevent exposure to young people is one of my biggest, my biggest requests, is trying to decrease exposure to young people. So to marketing, so how do we allow signage, zoning? I believe the planning commission, do you manage signage?
Signage is actually under the building inspectors, but the zoning, we, we do-
The bylaws.
At the ordinance, the address is signage, which goes through city council process as well.
Yeah, so having informed suggestions on what signage can and can't be around, you know, colorful, fun, childlike cartoons advertising what the, the store is that says, that sells marijuana, and then advertising on windows, that sort of thing. Things that, when young people walk by to and from school, and they walk by a liquor store and see sales and bright colorful ads, luring them in for the fifteen years that they go to the, the school that they're attending, and their, their favorability totally increases for substance use. So that's something that I'm concerned about, is exposure to marketing and signage. Um, oh, please push for further distance from schools. Two hundred feet takes forty seconds to walk. It's not that much of a distance, so maybe think about five hundred feet. It's a little over, a little over a minute, I think, which is a little more appropriate as far as exposing young people to accessible places where they can potentially have an older sibling or someone else purchase marijuana for them. That's what, that's been happening for a few years. Yeah, this is a family-friendly place, I love East Hampton, and I'm really excited to raise my family here. I do not want to see more addictive substances more accessible in this town, and I don't necessarily think we need more addiction in the town of East Hampton, so anything we can do to curtail the already troublesome public health implications of our alcohol and our tobacco use would be great. So I'm just proud of this group for taking these into consideration. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name's Marty Klein, Seven Stone Path Lane. I recently started a new business career as a marijuana-growing educator. I gave a talk at the community center here about three weeks ago to forty people, and I'm doing other talks in other communities as well, educating people how they can grow under the new law. There's obviously a lot of interest in that everywhere. I'm curious about one thing, this, the state law just blows my mind as far as how poorly I think it was crafted, and it's like, why do we have to reinvent the wheel here? There are other states like Washington and Oregon and Colorado who've been doing this already, and they, they have some experience with it, but Massachusetts is kind of acting like we're, this is the first time we've ever come up against this. I could be wrong, but from the outside, it looks like that to me. So has there been research, is, are you guys doing any research, or is the planning community in general looking into, what are they doing in other states in comparable-sized communities? What's, what's working there, what's not working there? I think the taxation, the way they're handling that, where we're trying to come up with a system here, as opposed to, I think Oregon has a really smart, flat-tax way to do it. I don't get why we're, it's Massachusetts, I get it. Okay. I've already run a file of, I guess, the long arm of the feds, in that I had a ticketing registration site set up for my talk, and it used a, a company like PayPal to process the payments for my tickets, and about a week after my site was up, they notified me, we believe that you're violating our terms of service, and we will not process your credit cards for payments. And I explained to them, nothing to do with plants, there's no plant materials there, it's a slideshow, and it's talk and handouts, and that's it. They said, sorry, we're not going to help you. So, given that, we have no idea what the feds are doing. We've heard a lot of different things coming out of there, from states' rights to clamping down more, nobody knows what's, what's happening on that level. When the city collects taxes from retail establishments, I don't know what you do with the tax money, what bank that goes into, is that bank going to accept that money? Could the feds come in and say, you cannot collect that money, because that money is collected in violation of federal law? It's possible. So I don't know if we need to come up with some contingency against that, I don't know. It's, it's all very confusing. There was a, I, I hope that when you're crafting regulations that, because the feds haven't allowed research on it, it's difficult to get good information on what constitutes impairment, and everybody is different, and, you know, that, it's a really gray area, I understand that. I hope that when you're drafting regulations, that you'll try to use the most sensible things that are available out there, and not go on the old stigma and the old thinking, because for decades, there were myths that were promulgated about marijuana that turned out to be not so accurate. And so I, I hope that you won't use those. For example, there was a TV piece after I did my talk here, and the piece started out about my talk, and then it went into how bad it is to drive on marijuana. I had nothing in my talk about driving on marijuana, had nothing to do with it, but yet they ended up talking with the chief of police in chickadee about it, and it was just, you know, a scare tactic, that kind of went back to the old stigma. So I hope you'll use good sense in crafting regulations. I would like to see regulations that are similar to how we regulate alcohol, because the law, after all, that we passed, or the ballot question that we passed, was to regulate marijuana like alcohol, taxation-wise anyway, so I'd like to see that as a guideline, and yeah, I agree that how alcohol has been regulated is not perfect, and we need to protect the young people. There's an old expression, I'll just go back to that driving thing again, there's an old expression, that drunks run red lights and stoners watch them turn green. I don't know how much that's worth. Someday I would like to see, like, the way that we have craft breweries here now, that maybe we'll have small establishments that have special strains of marijuana that they bred, and people can go in there and sample the strains, and sit there and enjoy it, and similar to what we have with, with the breweries now, there, people can go in and, and sample what they're making. Let's see, bed and breakfasts, I know in Colorado that they've, there are bed and breakfasts, there are resorts, I don't think resorts is going to be an issue here, but you may want to have, people may want to have marijuana-friendly bed and breakfasts at some point. Is, does that need to be covered in the regulations? Would a establishment be allowed to have a live plant on display? I know you're only supposed to grow a plant in your home, I, I don't, it's really hazy, I don't completely understand the law. I've talked, I've spoken to the East Hampton Police a couple of times, and as they explained it to me, yeah, we, we sent a few guys to estate training, and when they came back, we said, what'd you learn? And they said, nothing. So it's, it's confusing to everybody, and, yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing what happens, and I know you're going to give it your best shot, and good luck to you guys, because I have a master's in planning, and I don't envy you guys at all.
Thank you. Hi.
Ruth Ever, I'm the Coalition Coordinator for the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition. We are a volunteer-driven organization, we're actually housed in and supported by the school district, we're funded with a federal grant from the Office of National Drug Control Policy, which funds coalitions across the country like ours, working on promoting healthy youth and strong families, and preventing underage drinking and drug and alcohol use. So we certainly have a vested interest in protecting the youth in this community, and we are, I'm mostly here, I think, to just let you know that we exist, and that we see ourselves as a resource to decision-makers in town. We work closely with the mayor's office, obviously the superintendent's office, the police, the district attorney's office, we have health agencies involved, including the hospital, parents, youth, media, you know, we try to work with every sector of the community. And so I commend you for doing this, like others have said, I think this is a great and important thing to happen in a community, so that it's not about us and them, it's about how do we think well about our community and make sure that it stays vibrant and healthy, and that our young people, our main focus is on keeping young people away from drugs and healthy, and have them grow up to be productive and healthy citizens. I guess I just, I want to quote the Mass Municipal Association, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, the, the letter that they wrote after the referendum had passed, saying that cities and towns have a responsibility to ensure that the new law is implemented locally in a manner that protects the public, public interest, including addressing public health and public safety concerns, and ensuring that the rollout does not negatively impact residents, other businesses, neighborhoods, economic development plans, or other important considerations. And I feel like that really sums up well about sort of the approach to take, and in fact, that you're probably aware that they're, they have a training on, on Friday about the new marijuana law and the municipal role, and how municipalities can, and should respond to it, and I have the information here, just in case you don't know about it, that it sounds like you've been participating in things already. I just, I want to just mention a couple of things, you know, Paul kind of addressed a lot of it already, I'm not going to, I'll try not to repeat things. You know, at this point, it, I'm not up here to say this is what you should or shouldn't do, there's a lot of confusion about it, I don't claim to be an expert in, you know, policies and ordinances. It's more about the kind of questions that we ask as a coalition, that I think other people in the community are maybe asking, and I would urge you to be sort of thinking about it and have this kind of lens when you're starting to plan this stuff, which is things like, what kind of advertising do we want to see for marijuana in East Hampton? What kind of message is being sent to our young people? How much exposure do we want our children to have to this drug? Are the laws that we have adequate to ensuring that people under twenty-one cannot get access through any commercial means? I realize you don't have control once it leaves the store, but, you know, as a city, what is, you know, are we doing everything we can to make sure that they're not getting access through the, you know, because of poor zoning or ordinances or, or regulations? What do we want our community to look like when we walk down the street? How many pot shops would there need to be before the community doesn't feel family-friendly anymore? If marijuana shops become multi-use and you can't restrict who goes in there, what is that going to look like, and what is that going to feel like? There's been a lot of talk about regulating marijuana like alcohol, and, you know, this, I have the same problem that Paul mentioned, which is that from the public health community standpoint, that has not gone all that well for us. Alcohol is the number-one drug of choice among our young people, even though theoretically they don't have access to it. So I really hope we can do a better job with marijuana, and that we can learn from the decades of hard work that the public health community has had to do to fight tooth and nail, just to try to protect our young people. It shouldn't be this hard to protect young people from drugs. I want to also mention that East Hampton actually has quite a statistically stronger, lower marijuana use rate than students from surrounding school districts, and we would love to see that remain that way. So I hope that that, you know, that won't change, and that we can do what we can. Couple of things just to keep in mind, which is that as perception of harm goes down, youth drug use rate tends to go up, there's an inverse relationship there, and even though, so the fact that it's been legalized, it's sort of inevitable that the perception is that it's not harmful to young people, even though the teen brain and the adult brain are really different, and the impact on the teen brain is very different than the impact of drug use on the adult brain, kids don't really make those distinctions, so unfortunately, there already is a, a much lower perception of harm for marijuana than any other drug that's out there now. I want to reiterate what Paul said about advertising, that that's a huge, there's a recent study that came out by the American Academy of Pediatrics Journal, that said exposing, exposing, exposure to advertising may contribute significantly to cigarette, alcohol, and drug use, so there's no reason to think it won't be any different from marijuana. Youth are a huge target market for advertising, they are a hundred and fifty-five billion-dollar a year, you know, spending group, so they're very popular, and people do want to advertise to them. Young people are exposed to a couple of thousand beer and wine ads every year in, in, just on television, about forty thousand ads overall each year on television. Just to contrast that, would say Sweden and Norway, where there's a complete ban on advertising to children under twelve years old, which I thought was fascinating, like, could we even do that? You know, obviously that's not at this level, but it's just interesting to note that it's not a given that we have to advertise to young people. Let's see, I'm just going to summarize. So just, you know, a couple of things to think about when you're thinking about local regulations, in terms of practices that could help protect youth, based on what we know about tobacco and alcohol. I can't even say best practices for marijuana, because we, you know, there's been a lot of mistakes made in the other states that have legalized, and I think that, you know, people are trying to look at what can we do differently around that. But things that we do know can help is avoiding packaging and flavoring that's appealing to youth, that colorful, the gummy bears, you know, that kind of stuff, avoiding sugary edibles, and certainly making sure that it's clear that this is a drug and not a candy is very important. Limiting product placement and displays, especially outside the store or facing the street, even if the inside access is restricted, the way we have now, you know, just with the medical dispensaries, it's, you know, it, there's, there's no advertising around it, which is great from a young person's, from perspective of protecting young people. We know that limiting availability decreases the likelihood of youth access, we also know that young people are particularly price-sensitive, so if you have discretion around adding more taxes, that's something that can help deter young people if they get access to it in other ways. And putting the moratorium on, if that gives you time to be thoughtful and do your due diligence, makes a lot of sense from the perspective of, you know, doing, getting this right, so that we don't have to look back and say, oh, I wish we had known this, you know, and there's all these kids that are now getting addicted. I mean, there's other people you're going to hear from who work in the addiction community. So I just, you know, I want to commend you for being thoughtful and giving us this opportunity to speak, and just letting you know that we're eager to work with you in any way that we can. And I'll just, I'll give you a copy, it's got my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Hi, David Boyle. I'm the chairperson of the EDIC, and I'm not speaking on their behalf, but at one of their meetings, or our meetings, and I've seen it in some print media, and there was a discussion somewhere else, was that maybe East Hampton should be forward-thinking on legal marijuana from a business point of view, we should try to capitalize on it in the same way we did with microbreweries. And, you know, I know, I appreciate that, you know, there's going to be a lengthy process- And, you know, I know, I appreciate that, you know, there's going to be a lengthy process, a discussion. Just not speaking on behalf of EDIC, but from my personal viewpoint as a business owner, I don't think it's the same as the microbreweries. I would, I wouldn't put it in the same category as strength or positive. And I think if I had my way as a benevolent dictator, I wouldn't have it in highway business or downtown business. I understand the mills. I think it's a race to the bottom. So I just, my, my main theme is, I don't think it's a business opportunity. I understand it's coming, I understand there's taxation, I understand all that stuff. But one of the unique things about East Hampton is, you know, we're a growing, changing community, but we still have our remnants from our roots of being a mill town, having smaller density. So sometimes we carry some burdens that surrounding towns don't necessarily carry. We have more split families, we have more, higher population, and we, so we bear some of the costs that other communities that are, you know, a little bit more homogeneous or, and smaller, don't have. And so I don't think it's a business opportunity. That's basically the long and short of it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Shannon Hicks. I am the clinic director for the Center for Human Development's East Hampton Clinic, right on North Hampton Street. I'm also not speaking on their behalf, but I just wanted to kind of bring to your attention a little bit about what we're seeing at our clinic. It's probably not a surprise, there's been a major uptick in the last year in substance use disorder. We're treating a lot of clients, both, you know, adults and adolescents who are coming in who are struggling with substance use. And just, you know, a few people have spoken about this, but really, you know, marijuana, from what we're hearing a lot from the adolescents we're working with, it is, there's been a, you know, a huge, you know, way to look at it in terms of it's normalized, you know, it's, the adolescents we're working with are not seeing marijuana use, especially now with all the discussion about legalization and having pot shops. I mean, we're, we're just not seeing the adolescents that we're working with, you know, having as much concern about it and, you know, still really looking at it as, as a drug. And so it's a concern on our end, and we definitely want to support the community. We want to support the residents in the community, and we'd like to support you in any way possible, you know, but just to put it out there and make you aware that it is an issue in, in this community, and substance use is a major concern, and, and just, you know, to have that be a part of the conversation when, when decisions are, are being made as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tricia Dandrea. I'm a resident of East Hampton for 29 years. I've raised three sons here. They've all attended East Hampton Public Schools, so. I've really come to the planning board meeting tonight to better understand what steps East Hampton is taking to safeguard the health of our youth around where and how stores can sell marijuana paraphernalia, as well as marijuana for recreational youth. So I wanted to try to understand, because there's been two vape shops, which obviously are for e-cigarettes, and also, I call it a head shop, I think they're still called head shops in 19, from the 70s, right next to Shelburne Coffee Roasters. So I know if I'm going to get a scone with one of my sons, do I want to be walking by a head shop? So how did those come about, both vapes? Do they have to go through any special permits?
The, the vape store that's in the Union Street Plaza was before my time, so he basically has, that, that complex is permitted for retail and has been permitted for retail for a very long time. So the property owner has the ability to sort of have tenants, and, and we don't have like a line item for smoke shop. We don't have a definition for smoke shop, and I think that that actually, and even a head shop for that matter, you know, I think that, that the definition starts to get a little gray because stores could sell the majority, they could be selling clothing and other items, and they could be selling pipes as a very minor part of their, their stock inventory. And I don't know where you categorize or where you start to split hairs about what's considered a head shop and, and what's considered a smoke shop, and, and so that's part of my confusion as well, is, you know, if, if somebody had emailed me and said, North Hampton doesn't allow smoke shops and that's why they're all coming to East Hampton, well, I know for a fact that there are, there are stores in downtown North Hampton that sell majority clothing, but they do sell pipes in the back. So, you know, that's where I think it gets a little confusing until there's like an actual definition in place on what's going to define that, and then understanding that there's loopholes that could be, that if somebody says, well, I'm only, only 0.1% of my products is going to be smoke paraphernalia, 99% of it is clothing, you know, how do you, how do you categorize that? How, from a zoning administrative standpoint, that's, you know, that's where I think that there's a bit of a, a gray area, quite frankly.
But to answer your question, the other, the newer head shop next to Shelburne Falls came before us recently, was it a site plan approval or a special permit?
It was a site plan approval as a, as a retail store, because they, they were selling clothing in art.
An artwork, a wide variety of stuff.
And smoking, yes.
So I, and again, I'm not that familiar with, how do you sort of see this as part of the big picture? Which is about really offering individuals, and from my point of view, I'm a parent, I'm a nurse, I'm actually a health educator as well, and I've been part of the coalition as an effort to really take a look at, having had success with my own children here, who again are in their twenties, but to ensure that youth that are coming forward today in, in East Hampton, as we get exposed to all these amazing young families that are here, that this is a desirable place to live because I'm going to get a scone at Shelburne Falls Coffee Roasters with my seven-year-old, and I'm not walking by a shop that's advertising a bong.
I, I think the board did address this as part of their decision, if you want to, go ahead, Jim.
Well, when that came before us, there were a couple of things, more than a couple, but a couple I want to pinpoint, that we discussed. And one definitely was that they're carding everyone that comes in for 18 and over. Another was where are they placing signage? Another, I guess the third, is that everything is pushed to the back. It was really important to this board, I know, and everyone spoke about it here, that it be something for those 63.5% of East Hampton that voted in favor of it could have access to, although we're not really talking about cannabis in this case, we're talking about glass bowls, which is their product. And I think the majority is event clothing and something else up front. So it's a situation very much like what you're saying.
Well, and it wasn't just discussed by the board, it was a condition of the permit. So it was conditioned as part of the permit that they're not allowed to display smoking paraphernalia in their shop windows, that the only things they're allowed to display is clothing and art. And that they are required to have signs and to card anybody who's under the age of 21 without a parent or guardian. Those were two conditions that were set of the permit that the board responded to. They didn't have to set those conditions, they could be, but the board discussed it and, and heard from members of the public that had concerns about, about this retail facility being located downtown, and that was the measures that they could take under the rules and regulations that we have in order to condition them, and applicant happily agreed. They didn't want smoking paraphernalia in the windows because they're afraid somebody's going to break the window and steal it. They don't want to risk their business, they don't want to get shut down. So they, they carded for a reason. I mean, they, they were looking at it from their own entrepreneurial side as well, and they didn't want to, to, you know, cause any stress, I would say, within the board. I think it was a very open dialogue, quite frankly, between the board and the applicant in regards to, to its location, its location near the schools, and, and what could they do to sort of condition it so that it could be, they could still locate, they could still run their business, but it could also protect, you know, kids that might be walking up and down that street.
So I, I appreciate hearing some of the thoughtful detail that went into it, but I do also want to just acknowledge, at least from my own experience, that I think if I was a teenager, I would just not even know that, you know, they are looking at the culture. And so having this be part of our downtown where people are mulling around, you know, teens and youth are seeing this, these types of, even whether it's clothing, as part of a culture on marijuana. So, which we are trying to educate people about, but also not trying to have them see this as the type of clothing I want to be wearing to go to my high school. So just to kind of complete some thoughts that I have is that my understanding is that, you know, young brains constantly are seeking reward. It can be from a coach with a positive comment, it can be a friend who says, I love your new phone case that has marijuana leaves on it. And we just have to be really thoughtful in terms of what opportunities we're bringing into town that is going to potentially be targeting and marketing to teens and youth. When we take a, take a look at, in general, that, and I appreciate, and I just hope that you're careful, you will carefully reflect on guidelines that'll create, whether it is signage, zoning, ordinances, et cetera, to help be the parent for the young people of this community who are walking and talking the streets and the businesses of East Hampton. In thinking forward about how to provide economic opportunity here in East Hampton that supports recreational marijuana use, I just asked the planning board to access information and guidance from professional resources, and it was very comforting to hear Ms. Allen's comments about how she has prepared to provide education to all of you around making sure that we're really looking at best practices. And so just please help set our town up for success in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, my name is Andrew Schelfer, I live at Nine Pason Avenue. I also work at the Williston North Hampton School, and I'm here on behalf of the school tonight. I want to read a statement to you. As a longstanding member of the East Hampton community, the Williston North Hampton School has a deep interest in the city's economic health and vibrancy and the safety of its community. The growth in recent years of the downtown business district has been exciting, with new businesses and events that school employees, alumni, current and prospective students and their families frequent. Whether during an event like the monthly art walk or just a regular weekend evening, Union Cottage Streets have a wonderful atmosphere that is friendly to children and families. And we applaud the great work that the city council, the mayor, and many groups and individuals have done to create this growth, and have been pleased to be involved in some small part with various initiatives. Given that, the recent legalization of marijuana in all its forms and potency brings up complex issues, we recognize that it provides new retail opportunities for the city, but it also raises concerns, particularly for a school like ours with hundreds of high school aged children who frequently walk downtown to visit restaurants and other local businesses. The American Academy of Pediatrics is just one of the many organizations who have asserted that marijuana is harmful to adolescent health and development. It impairs concentration, motivation, memory, decision-making, and academic performance. Unfortunately, though, as we've heard from others here tonight, many teens believe that marijuana is safe, and widespread public availability next to shops they already know and love is only likely to reinforce this impression. As the city council and the planning board considers how to implement the new law in East Hampton, we want to call upon its members to enact careful limits on the number of licenses in accordance with the legalization law. Limiting the number of licenses is an essential step to ensure that our city remains inviting and safe for children, families, and visitors. We ask that the planning board take a thoughtful, considered approach in rolling out this new state law and vote to restrict the number of licenses. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments or questions or?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Mary Cerez. I'm a reporter with the Springfield Republican Newspaper. I just had a question for Jessica. I, I think earlier in the evening, you said that in order to prohibit cafes, you would need to go to the voters. But in looking at this handout...
Prohibit, so if you go further regulation?
It says, but it says...
Ordinance are by law by a vote of the voters of that city or town, and it has, that vote has to be done at an election. So it says prohibiting the operation of one or more types of marijuana establishments within the municipality.
Right, but under here, on, on, where it says petition for question on state ballot to permit marijuana cafes...
So that's different.
Oh, so...
Cafes is, is considered a different category than the recreational, for the retail establishment or the grow operation.
So it's just, can you tell me if I'm reading this correctly, that it, that town, that cafes would only be permitted with, by, at the ballot box?
So it's not even called cafes in, in the law, that's just the term that people are using. It's, it's onsite consumption.
Onsite, so you would need to, so like to permit onsite consumption, it would actually have to be, that would have to be authorized by the voters at the ballot box, correct?
That's right.
Okay, thank you, just for a point of clarification.
Yep.
Sure.
Marty Klein again. I don't know if you've heard, but a couple of guys in North Hampton purchased the Old Elks Club there, kind of at the Fitzgerald and the other end of Fitzgerald Lake, and they're turning it into the Massachusetts Cannabis Club, which will be a private club, monthly membership, people bring their own marijuana there to consume. Are you going to address private clubs in your regulations, is my question?
Do you have a response? Sure.
Well, I can't tell you what we're going to do in the future. So I, you know, I have to start there, clearly. I can tell you that I spoke with Dick Evans from Evans and Cutler, who helped write this initiative. They're located in North Hampton. I wanted some additional information and clarification, and they spoke about this because a lot of their clients are coming to them. And I think it's clear that there will, I think, there will likely be people that come before us looking to establish that kind of business. Point, because I don't really want to discuss tonight, we're here to listen to you. But the big trepidation they had, Dick Evans did, was that the, I think it's OSHA, laws against secondhand smoke, and, and what really has worked for tobacco in preventing public smoking, apply in the same regards. It really won't matter if, if you get away with the, you know, skirting the current laws by creating these memberships, and if you're exposing any employees at all to secondhand smoke, business ended.
But they could do edibles. You could have a private club that could...
That's the, that's the...
Or you can, or you can have no employees and simply have a group club.
And now I'm just opening up a discussion.
But, I mean, I think that, these are all things that I, I think, it's going to be really important to be thinking of all these different options and, and what we need to get out in front of, and, you know, either prohibit or allow, or allow with restrictions or in certain places. I mean, it's going to, there's a lot of nuances here, and, if a lot of people left already, but I hope that everyone who's talked tonight will come back to future hearings too, because I think it's a, definitely a work in progress. It's not even a work that we've started yet, but I think we're going to need a lot more input, so this has really been great. Anybody else have anything else to add tonight?
There's a lot of discussion to have.
There's a lot of discussion to have.
How many, are you planning on having more of these forums before the, what is it, the 2018 regulations are released?
I mean, we haven't really made a plan yet. I mean, our, our next formal step is that we need to begin the process, which will be at public meetings, of crafting a draft bylaw. And whether we do that before we get state regulations or not, or if we work on doing a moratorium so that we have time to do that after the regulations come in, we haven't discussed that. So, I mean, we will, at some point in the future, put this back on as an item on our agenda to discuss sort of what we as members are thinking of for strategy in that sense, and have public comment at that as well. But none of that has been scheduled or decided yet.
Well, just one final thing I'll say is that, so a, a lot of people mentioned the concern they have for children and advertisements to children, and I'm definitely not promoting advertising to children, but a big concern of mine is that there's the scare tactic of what about the children? Like, the children are a big concern. So I would just try to promote to you guys that we should also take into consideration all the other people who do want marijuana in the town, and not to demonize it or to put it always in the back room or to hide it necessarily. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
He just got in the newspaper.
Anybody else? All set? Anybody else have any comments up here? Good? All right, I guess I will...
So, yeah, just, what do you want to do? Do you want to continue this for, like, in a month, or like, what's, what do you think the board's strategy should be? I don't want it to just...
I feel that we should continue this discussion.
We do have some other zoning things that have to get wrapped up. We, we have this, the seasonal cottage...
Right.
...community that is like this close to being sent to council, that I'd like to maybe deal with next...
maybe deal with next meeting and get that moved on. And then we do have the sign ordinance, that's half written that we need to finish, so...
So maybe next month, then.
I mean, I think that we need to have a conversation about probably the context of a moratorium or not, and how we want to get into the regulation.
Okay.
I don't want to take it off the table now, but I think skipping a couple, a couple of meetings to get the other stuff done is okay, but I want to leave it on the table.
So just for the people in the room, I mean, can we maybe like pick a, a day so that...
Sixty days, ninety days?
Well, let's put it...
So, so we could do it like, come on, phone, of course you're not gonna work.
One, two, three.
The fourth or the 18th is our, oh wait, I'm in September, how the hell does that happen?
No, that's right though, for April too.
Oh.
The fourth or the, or the 18th.
Fourth or the 18th. So, I mean, a fourth would be a month, 18th would be six weeks, I mean, I, so the agenda item would...
So the fourth gives us two meetings though between, or the 18th gives us two meetings in between, so we could do the seasonal cottage and revisit the sign ordinance, which I think is not halfway done, because we did the easy half.
But I just want to ask James, you've been going to the city council ordinance meetings?
Yes.
So you have a sense of what their opinion is at this time?
Well, most of what they've been dealing with is the medical marijuana business, and they're doing site visits and talking about the medical specifically, so that's what's been on their agenda.
Okay.
The recreational really hasn't been.
Okay, all right, so they haven't, they haven't come up with a plan of attack either, okay. I just want to make sure that we're not working in like two parallel universes and not...
No, that's a good point too.
No, it's a very good one.
So let's put this on the agenda again for the 18th.
For April 18th?
And we can talk then about what our next serious step will be.
Okay.
Or at least begin that discussion.
And one of the things about it too is, you know, I don't like to be slow, I think East Hampton is an important place, a lot of people love the city, everyone here for sure, and we don't want to be seen as trying to slow things down or having a slow process, but really while we're working this out, nothing is slow until the point at which someone comes before us looking to have that business, and we don't have that yet, do we?
I mean, we have people interested, but they can't get licensed yet.
I have people who are interested in grow operations.
Right. And what are they waiting for? Are they waiting for zoning, they waiting for...
I told them to, if they want to grow, then they need to go under the medical marijuana at this point, because that's where the regulations are, and I don't have regulations in place, and I'm not going to treat it like it's just a regular manufacturing use. So, so that's, that's been the, the one entity that is just looking for a space to grow.
One?
One entity, yep, that's looking for a space to grow, they want to lease, you know, 20,000 square feet or something like that in one of the mills, to, just to grow, but they're looking primarily, they were looking initially for recreational, but now they're gonna go medical. But understand that these entities, depending on how the law plays out, the medical facilities may have basically the right of first refusal, basically, they will be able to immediately go to recreational.
Yeah. I sort of wish they had attended the meeting tonight.
He was going to, actually.
Great input.
Yeah, the attorney who's for Hamden Care was planning to attend, but...
Let her know about the 18th, for sure.
Yeah, I will. So, you know, that's, that's the other piece, is somebody gets their foot in the door under medical, you know, we're a little slow trying to figure out what we're doing recreationally, we have a moratorium in place or something, they potentially could still become recreational, even with the moratorium in place, so the moratorium doesn't address that.
Right, and also there's, I think under the state law already, there's a deadline for if we don't come up with state regs, the medical already, by right can do recreational regs, so...
Exactly, exactly. So that's, that's what I think the interesting thing about the moratorium though, is that you could have a moratorium in place, but you could have a medical facility that could automatically just go recreational.
It's got false teeth.
Yeah, I mean, it prevents...
Prevents certain things, but it doesn't...
Prevents certain things, but it doesn't prevent everything.
Right.
Right, so, it's complicated.
Well, it protects the spread, if you got, you got one that's already taken up by the medical marijuana, it eliminates one itself.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
All right, to be continued to the 18th.
All right, so now I will take a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.
I gotta go sleep.